Good evening, I'd like to call the City of New Franklin Council meeting for Wednesday, September 7th, 6 o'clock. We can have two first readings, no seconds and one third. And our first one is with Mr. Cox, so Finance Committee.
We're open a Finance Committee meeting at 6:00. Resolution number 22R51, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Summit County Budget Commission and authorizes necessary tax levies and certifying them to the Summit County Fiscal Officer and declaring this an emergency. This is something that we do every year. It needs to be done probably begin in November, needs to be approved by. I don't see any reason to wait on this and go ahead and wait this week. We will cancel, we will end the Finance Committee meeting at 6:01.
I don't know if I can beat it, here we go. I'm gonna go ahead and open the Streets and Village Committee at 6:03. All members are present, so we have one resolution this evening, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Southeastern Equipment Company for the purchase of a 2019 KCE 621G XR T4F loader. I'm sure everybody understands what that is. You can picture one of your mind right now. For the Service Department declaring an emergency. I talked with Brian earlier, this will be replacing a 2008 loader, which leaves, Brian said at this point around $24,000 worth of repairs on it to keep it going. And they're actually gonna, as a trade, give us $19,000 for that piece of equipment. It was budgeted to get a new loader this year at $195,000. He was gonna jump in with the county or the state, the county on their bid. The state bid. And he was still doing some research, that didn't work out. And he found a used 2019 loader for $139,000, which has 580 hours on it.
Roughly.
Roughly. It's similar, bucket's a little bigger. With winter coming up, he's not too sure if we put the $24,000 in our old loader, it's gonna be, you know, be servicing us for several years to come. So we just thought it was a good time to do this. And if he got on the bid to get a new one, it'd be December of next year if he possibly could deliver a new brand new one, so. Anybody has any questions? Brian's here, of course, and we can discuss what we need to do with this one.
I had to ask Brian about just the loader, they got just mistyped it in there, it says an '04.
It's an '04.
And Brian verified the price, it was the amount they've given the credit for is an '08. This is coming out of the, as Dave said, $190,000 line, it was like 2011-620-5540. So do we have any other expenses worth, basically we're running back to $32,000, is there anything else we're looking to get with that, or?
He had talked about some things, but we're also got to kind of regroup, we were talking about this, and we haven't been able to sit down yet, talk about this manner, we have to regroup because his gas prices and things have gone up, so we may have to kind of move some of these things to cover some of the costs that have risen this year, unfortunately.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was just wondering if we were seeing anything else, if there was some other costs, we can kind of shuffle some on your own.
Yeah.
As I said, with the truck we purchased a few meetings back, we had $140 margin equity spent, $128 to another $11,000 there. Okay.
Yeah, also talking to Brian, it appears we're taking a pickup truck that possibly he's having some trouble with, but you know, a few with the local administration, what's gonna happen, so. There's definitely some money left over, and this is a nice new, always serviced by Southeastern. And I think it was a Summit County trade-in?
A state, a state trade-in.
State, a state trade-in, so.
I'm not sure which district it came from, but it's a wall cat machine, we're not gonna continue this service.
I don't have a problem with placing this and moving on.
I agree, if you found used equipment, buy it. There's nothing out there that's not.
It still has the plastic on the armrests, so I mean, it's not used very much.
I did some quick checking, and 2019 KCE 621G XR T4F loader, used, they're running about the same price, a little bit higher with more hours on it, and sometimes less equipment. So Brian has found just a terrific deal on this, and Southeast is working well with them, so I appreciate it.
Another thing to mention on that, you guys, it has 580 hours. If this is used for, let's just say, salt usage, chances are a half of those hours is not more than just sitting right on. Because you don't shut the equipment off, when you fill your truck, you let it run for the next decade or so, so it probably doesn't have much actual use time on it.
So I'll be asking the way of three readings. Can you find that? Any other questions? Alright, thank you, I'll close Streets and Village at 6:07.
Andy's gonna appear this evening.
You want me to take that? So this is the third reading, wait, I have to open the Community Development meeting at 6:50?
6:07.
6:07, we'll call it 6:07. This is the third reading, this is a resolution authorizing an expenditure not to exceed $20,000 for printing and mailing, printing, mailing and tabulation of the community survey component of the 2022 Comprehensive Plan and declaring this an emergency. This has been discussed a bit, we said this is the third reading, so we're gonna have to vote on this tonight.
We don't have to vote on it.
You can, you can take time, you don't have to.
And I was hoping the last time we could, you had a full council, if you was gone, and then, Andy.
It goes pending legislation after third reading, if it's not passed.
It'll be pending for years. So making me feel like I'm the Speaker of the House or something. But that's the Senate. And Andy's, he was on the business, he still wanna take some time, he's on the same page as me, I believe that, you know, we're gonna, we wanna do what's to this, we wanna get some most people, I'm not looking to save $2,000 or whatever it might be to, you know, maybe not be accessible to everybody.
And we still need to have a, have the bids come in and have a resolution concerning specific bids to set us off there.
So, okay, you'll have to explain that, and I thought once canceled.
No, I'm sorry, I mentioned it last meeting, I think we talked about that, but it's tricky, I get. What we have to have is, this would have authorized an expenditure up to $20,000, but we still need the specific proposal. So the council approves a proposal for XYZ Company, an amount of X amount of dollars. And I don't know if you, if the steering committee has, you know.
We do, I don't have them in front of me.
I mean, we gotta get it to us, and then we'll do the resolution.
Correct.
And I, the only other note I would have is, if more than $20,000, then you don't wanna pass this one.
Well, this could be amended.
Oh, either way.
Okay, so I'm okay with moving forward on it tonight, I haven't been okay with it before. At least it gets us one foot in front of the other, then we can hand it off to you and.
We're gonna need a second resolution, that's all, with whatever company that you, whatever, whoever, whoever you decided on, their specific proposal for whatever the dollar amount is.
But we could do that after this.
We have to do that after, it's a separate piece of resolution.
Right. And all I'm saying is this tonight.
We wanna make sure that that's not more, you know, that the one you're gonna recommend is not more than $20,000.
Let me explain that, so the proposals there, they've done a lot of work on us. And Mike's here, can explain more if needed.
But basically, we shaved some things, or they have shaved some things down by changing a couple in a way, some of the things were done. We verified with Katie that the collection and consolidation of the data will not be an issue, she agreed that it seemed like a pretty simple process. Right now, the total cost, the highest cost we have proposed right now is $20,191. So that includes the follow-up postcard, which the steering committee basically didn't think that was all that important, a follow-up postcard. So without the follow-up postcard, it would be, Mark, you might need to correct me if I'm wrong, I'm collecting separate sheet, 14661, or 16637 would be the highest.
That sounds right, you're 3500 and so for the follow-up postcard part of it, so.
5,000 or so.
Between the two companies, it was, yeah, so that sounds about right.
So if we wanted to approve this at 22,000 to make sure, I didn't understand that second step. So if we wanted to amend this, are we allowed to amend that at this meeting, 22,000 and pass it, right?
Yeah, I'd say so.
This would probably be the best time to do it.
Right, and that, that basically.
Well, we never get there. What Susan is saying is that technically, we, when you're gonna bring the second resolution, you don't necessarily have to have this one to do the next one. The next one, yeah, the next one can stand alone.
Yeah.
Mayor, could we just ask, or set this one to the next meeting? Get the proposals, and remember, they're gonna email them to us, or send them to us. Get the proposals, whichever one they wanna go with, amend this to include that new proposal with the new amount, and then we, they're gonna get your amended resolution. We would have the information to wall over in the next two weeks, and then we could vote on it at the next meeting for passage.
You could do that, or you could, if you come with a new one that has the price and the exact amount, you could withdraw this one and pass the one that you have to pass.
So we're not, so my understanding was that we could, we could, we as council could authorize an up to amount, pass it off to you, and you could take it.
No.
That's not really, no.
So they have an authorization under the contract with ABC.
Yeah, and it'd be what's, like we've seen, so, you know, that was, that you'll authorize the mayor to execute all documents necessary, and finance director to pay X amount of dollars to ABC. And that, you know, that might be cleaner just as a separate resolution. You can leave this one pending, you could pass it and amend the higher number if you wanted to, but it's the other one that's gonna be the operative one, that the auditor's gonna want.
We could've had that, but I.
I didn't know, I didn't know you guys had selected.
I think we're all ready.
Well, I think we talked about maybe getting the numbers, and taking this one off and getting the real numbers, and we could go over that, and we kept this on to keep the discussion going.
Okay.
Because I knew that we couldn't, with this one, you wasn't able to just authorize and go out and get them, you had to have another one for us to approve, to actually make the transaction happen.
Do we have any copies of the proposal at this point?
You just had email discussions to nail these numbers down, right?
We have one formal proposal, and then the other company is doing it within the verbiage of an email, I believe.
Well, yeah, they both, they had both sent PDF proposals that were good for 90 days, but then there were minor tweaks that we asked them to give us additional information on. The one company gave us an additional written quote, which is actually an Excel spreadsheet with all the numbers. The other company just did it verbally because we hadn't made any kind of commitment. They were the higher priced company anyways, the other one seems to be the company that we would recommend. We have those documents with them.
But in the end, this, this body is what says okay.
Right.
So until, if we just get, like, here it is, vote on it tonight, I'm not down with that. So we need to get it emailed to us, so we can at least look at them. So it's up to this body to make that decision.
That's giving us.
That's my fault, I didn't understand. I just, I was.
Now, now I know.
So whatever number you decide on, if it turns out to be the.
So you just want one proposal?
If it turns out to be $16,000, whatever, what we're gonna want is something just like we had for the truck.
Right.
It says $16,000, whatever, and then we'll have a resolution that says we're approving it.
Gotcha. Okay, mine, mine is, I thought we could authorize the mayor.
The mayor will count. It's the next one, it's the next one.
Well, then I guess what we have to do is have the time.
I'd like to make a comment about this. They're kind of holding back, but I feel I need to let my opinion know, I mentioned it before, but I'm gonna share, share again. I do not support sending out the survey to all 5,000 households. I think as an antiquated system, I don't believe we would get a large enough return of the paper surveys to make it worthwhile. We're looking to spend $16,000 approximately to send out this paper survey to every household, plus possibly an additional $3,500 for reminder card. And the survey committee, the steering committee, I have total respect for, I've been to almost all of their meetings, I like the way they work together, they talk about things, people that have a diverse opinion, they share it, they don't get shut down, people discuss it then, there's a lot of back and forth, and I think that the steering committee is doing a wonderful job. But the recommendation, as I understood it from the steering committee, is to just send out the survey and no follow-ups. But a big comment that's been made a lot, we wanna make sure that every resident is having the opportunity to get the survey, see the survey, et cetera. But we're only giving them one shot at that. For $3,500 to send out a postcard, we could send out five postcards, almost five postcards worth $16,000 to remind people, to let people know, go to the website, click this QR code, call the office, and we'll bring out, we'll mail, we'll mail an individual survey to the few individuals that need it, we'll bring it out to you. I'll deliver it to anybody that needs it, I'll pick it up and bring it back in, whatever it takes. But I just feel like we're spending a lot of money, unnecessary money, when we could probably be more effective sending out more postcards, reminding people, get the survey, go online, go do it. Now, and I also understand that 17 years ago, however many years ago, we sent out the paper surveys, and we had a nice response. Well, that was your only option. Yeah, I just, I just think that sending out a paper survey to every household is a waste of money, and I do not support it, I will not support it. And again, I just, that's no reflection on the steering committee, I have total respect for all the hard work you're doing, but on this, on this matter, I'm very much opposed to it.
Understood, and appreciate your base. If I could answer that with a little bit of a discussion from what was discussed in the steering committee, and the survey committee, and a lot of the ideas that have been bounced around, there are two main focus points. So this cost is based on a 30% return rate, so a lot of the cost has been muted, the survey's coming back. So if you're right, and we do have a very low turnout from the returns, the cost will be significantly less. So that, and I don't know how that works, whether we would have to, if it has to be the exact amount, we're not gonna pay them if they don't get them returned.
We'd always come in less, they'll come in less, it's, you know, but we have to have the contract amount in the resource.
Okay, gotcha. So, so that's, that's a lot of trouble. A second piece of that same thing is that we haven't done a survey in so long, whereas other communities have, and they've seen how the balance of QR code responses, hey, could you mail me one, just figure out the link and go online yourself. They know what their community's response rate is and all that, and they can make a decision based on that, we can't do that. What we have to do is just assume there's some people out there that we feel we need to get their opinion of, so that's explaining the feeling and the sentiment of the committee. I think after this survey is done, and we have this information, hopefully we're gonna do surveys on a more regular basis going forward, and I'm hopeful that we have good data that we could use to back up the art. I just, my opinion is, we don't have that, that data to back that up just yet. Another piece to this is, this community has a big memory, it remembers things for a very, very long time. And I have a little bit of a fear that we're gonna move forward with this, and I'm not the only one with this opinion, we're gonna move forward with this, and five years down the road, somebody's gonna poke a hole in this and say, boy, if you would've just sent me one of those, I would've filled out. Actually, at the last meeting, well, I'm sorry, the meeting at the Tudor House, there was a guy said, well, you never sent me a survey. Obviously, we did send a survey if you lived here, and we're able to say that. I'm not saying that argument has merit, I'm saying it's an argument that when you're talking about community development, and I think something that's really important in this community is buy-in for community development, so that we have community ownership of what we're doing and moving forward, I would like to spend some money to prevent that argument, and I think this, I think this does that. Definitely. Okay? Thank you, good discussion, I appreciate it very much. Anybody have anything else?
Add.
So we're just gonna make this pending legislation, is that what I said?
Um, yeah, just take time.
Just take time, use the same.
And now commit to any legislation.
Alright, anything else for community development?
Yes, I do, I mean, if you gotta get emails, we have email addresses up here, like some of the other things, we can just kind of look, instead of just saying, here's one, you know, that way we have something.
It's okay.
You get district or email, figure it out for them to us, maybe we'll just kind of look around and see what, and then, you guys still pick the one you guys wanna do and go, and then you could prioritize that one, but I'd like to see what somebody had options or actually have discussion.
Alright, thank you. Perfect, bye. Alright, anything else for community development?
Close the Community Development meeting, I had the longest one, Andy, nine years, at 6:18.
Anything else anyone has to add to this? And I'd like to, at 6:23, bring the City of New Franklin regular council meeting on Wednesday, September 7th. Everybody safe to the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, united in the principle of liberty and justice for all. Kelly, would you be a roll call for us?
Mr. Cox?
Present.
Mr. Harget?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Powell?
Here.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the regularly scheduled meeting of August 17th.
Second.
You have a first and a second, Kevin?
Mr. Harget?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Mr. Sting.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
That is 5-0. Do we have any public comments? Anybody would like to say anything at this time? Then we start with our first reading, Kelly, resolution number 22R51.
A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Summit County Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the Summit County Fiscal Officer and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to Finance Committee, we move to waive the three readings on resolution 22R51.
Second.
You have a first and a second, Kevin?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Harget?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution 22R51.
Second. We have a first and a second, Kevin?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Harget?
Yes.
Motion cap is 6-0. Our second resolution is number 22R52.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Southeastern Equipment Company for the purchase of a 2019 CASE CE 621G XR T4F loader for the Service Department and declaring an emergency.
Yeah, this was discussed during the Streets and Village Committee, I make the motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a first and a second.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Harget?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Motion cap is 6-0.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 22-R51.
Sorry, I'm sorry, 52?
Second.
We have a first and a second, Kevin?
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Harget?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Our third reading for resolution number 22R47, Mr. Daniels?
This was brought before the Community Development Committee meeting, and it was decided that we need to ask for time.
Time was requested, so time will be granted. And now, our favorite part of the program, on the energy.
Oh, boy. Alright, let's see, you'll be happy to know they don't have a whole lot. First of all, the Tudor House barbecue was a big success, yeah, thank you guys.
It really was.
Many folks, the council were present, and we had great community support, we had 25 community sponsors. One of them's sitting up there, but Jeff is kind enough, Mr. Daniels is kind enough too. And what was really important, I think impressive, we had nine the first year. And so these were, these are businesses that stepped up, and a lot of them for the first time. And, you know, I think it's, anyway, it's just a real positive atmosphere out there. Net profit of right around $11,000. So, and the point of that is to try to fund our summer events out there. Many of you folks were there and supported us as well, and so we should be able to do that well with those funds, so we're really excited about that. October 13th is coming up, October 16th, so we'll have one more, one more big event out there. You mentioned, it was mentioned last meeting that we did have a parks committee met up at Grill Park, and met with residents, it was a great meeting, and we had a lot of interesting, good feedback and good suggestions, and we have moved on a lot of that already. Mr. Kepler and the Service Department went up and took care of a lot of those things that we talked about out there that day, within a week, within a couple days, actually. And one of the other, one of the items that they were interested in was some fencing in front of the, in front of the benches, the teen benches, and some gravel, because they're sitting in the mud and they're dodging fall balls, and their one backstop needed some work. So we got a price on that, we're gonna go forward on that, get that fencing up and get that backstop fixed, and then we're pricing out some of the other things, swings and stuff like that, playground equipment, so we're continuing to move in that direction for the, for the folks on the west side, and for everybody that cannot enjoy that. While we're on Grill Park, Grill Road, Bridge, you wouldn't know it's a bridge, this is one of those, it's got a big culvert, so, anyway, we, it's, we have a number of them, we got, I think, 30 altogether, over the course of time, these were, they came to us from the county, now that we're a city, a lot of them are not in the best of shape. All of them are plenty safe right now, ODOT does a good job of checking those. Matter of fact, I'll have for you at the next meeting, the resolution for us to participate again in ODOT's Bridge Inspection Program, and they're continuing that for another year, and I don't know what source they're funding it through, but they're not funding a few lots. So it doesn't cost us any money, we just have to approve the resolution. So they check the bridges, and I want everybody to know that, and for instance, Benner Road, when they checked that one, that's what resulted in a Benner Road situation. Grill Road Bridge is not one that they're trying to shut down or anything like that, but it's on that list of ones that could use some work. The, it's about a $600,000 project, we were approved for the municipal bridge program for that project as well, the city's share of that is gonna be 5%. So there's about another half a million dollars coming into the city. And so we're meeting out there later this month for the planning stage of that, so that's, that's happening. And Cleveland Masson Road paving is moving along as well, that's gonna be done in two phases, the first phase will be Grill Road to Eastern, the second, and that will be, that will be done next year, I'm part of the 2023. And then the second phase, they don't have, scheduled till 2027, and that will be from Grill South to the, to the city line. That is a $562,000 project, and we have $421,000 coming for maintenance on that, so the city's match on that is 25%. So that'll be next year, I wanna give you a heads up on it and move along with that.
I'm sorry, Paul, I apologize, we're in 25% match, that is for, the one for next year or the one for 2027?
One for next year.
Okay.
And the 2027 will be the same 75-25, and it's about the same amount of money. And let me see, I guess finally, the auction is Saturday, so we have a variety, everything from waste baskets to trucks, so it's always interesting, and we have a celebrity auctioneer who's coming back, Mayor Bolis has agreed to come back and be the auctioneer for that, so that's at the Service Department, the one he actually wrote. The auction will begin at 9:00, the doors will open at 8:00, if you. Uh, the auction will begin at 9 o'clock, the doors will open at 8 o'clock, if you want to come and take a look. We don't have a lot, you know, there's not a lot of stuff, but you can come over Saturday and see what we got and uh, and put in a bid. Uh, so that's Saturday at 9 o'clock, and come out and have some fun at the auction, this day I'll do the same. And that's all I got.
Thank you.
Oh, wait a minute, I've got one more thing.
Okay.
Uh, this is a late entry, I just got this call this afternoon from uh Brett Baucher over at Re, at Republic. Uh, God bless him, they're one of our sponsors. Uh, the re, there was a fire at their recycle center. Uh, and they said that they, it may cause them to get off their recycle schedule for a day or two. Uh, so I don't, they, they hadn't determined that by this afternoon, I'm going to check back with him. Uh, we'll post it on the website and the Facebook page and let people know if there's going to be a delay and, and how that's going to play out. Uh, but I'm going to catch that on as well. That's it.
If I could throw this out while it's still the way it's reported, um, the barbecue was good. It was uh a beautiful facility, it was an opportunity to really see the, you know, where we had our meeting and see it in actual. Um, it was very professionally run, I, I mean, it was just, it just, it came off without a hitch. I, I uh, I expressed this with the mayor, uh, I had brought a bunch of friends from Green in, uh, they had never really seen the Tudor House. They'd definitely not seen it in its glory the way it is now. Um, but everybody was pretty blown away, and um, it was, New Franklin looked, looked really good that day.
Team effort, I can assure you of that.
Yeah.
Can you anything say to the conference and the panel members?
Well, Mr. Commonwealth's here, so um, he's the, he's the boss of that, I'm just a, I'm just another, so I'll see what we got there.
Council, Mayor, hello everybody. Um, it seems like we owe you guys a little bit more work, so make sure we satisfied your need, you need to see the copies of.
Just, you know, just something to look over, I don't know if I'm the only one, but.
It would be nice to know.
So what I'll do is I'll get the committee back together, through some email chatter, so we can have a meeting to present more of that. And Council, ever, what do we need to get your support for?
I, I don't know that there's, uh, I know, try and keep an open mind, but right now I really just don't see the point of sending a paper ballot to every household in 2022.
Yeah, so if we trim that number down.
How would you decide which households get it and which don't?
Random, just random.
I, I, I don't, I, I, I don't know how that would accomplish what you feel your goal is.
Or, is, at one particular time, I made the suggestion that we do, anyone needed a paper ballot, we would deliver the paper ballot.
Yes.
And everyone else would do the online survey.
Right.
Can we still move in that vein?
Absolutely, absolutely, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to prevent people, I'm not suggesting to prevent people from getting that. I even said, I'll, I'll take them out to, to the house, I'll take the paper survey out to the house and I'll pick it, pick it back up from them. Uh, I won't fill it out for them because I don't want Secretary of State coming to see me. Um, but uh, I'll be happy to do that, and anybody that requests, and we've talked about that before, that we would have ballots of the, the survey available here at, at City Hall that they could pick up, or that we could mail to them individually if someone individually requested it, or if they need someone to bring it out, uh, we could get it to them. There's, there's no problem with that, I just don't see the need to send it to every single house to be thrown away while they're on computers going, going to survey.
That's right.
I just wanted to make sure. And I believe that if we're sending out more postcards, more reminders, that that would be more useful of, of the, the funds than a one-time shot of uh, uh, paper attraction.
So I will, I will adopt that suggestion, I will put it out to the members of our committee.
Okay, thank you.
So when we return, we've answered your question, we've used your compromised locations and reached a happy medium. Only thing we're pushing against of time, we're trying to make sure that we meet the criteria of the proposal. And we don't want too much mail going out at the same time when we're going to the, yeah, the election, the political challenge. I hope we're done, I'm burning out, I'm throwing everything away, so that's really what we're kind of, trying to stay on.
That's one reason why I brought it up tonight.
Yep. I guess that if, I'm in favor of the mail out, I'm not in favor of not mailing them. So if you're, I mean, if you want to get to a point where you're going to throw it out to us, what is everybody, what's the majority in favor of? I'm in favor of mailing them, and Jim, Jim disagrees on that, which is fine.
Yep.
But if you cater to Jim, then now I'm not opposing him. So I mean, that's, that's what you got, you got, you got.
And I digress, we're going to see what the different proposals are.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah, so, but, yeah, so to cater to one person that's against something, that is not, but then you kind of come across like, well, we're trying to make it, so Jim agrees, I don't, I don't agree.
And that's why it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be.
I know, but I've been here a little longer, so. Anyhow. I know, but yeah, so, I mean, I, I get everything, everybody's opinion, I'm in favor of it, I have no problem with anybody's opinion, but I, I like the idea of. Like, I don't want, there's a few people that, and then, yeah, you can send a reminder, but maybe they can't do that, maybe they'd rather just say that they're getting, you know, without me bringing it out to them or something, and I know there's people out there would like to just, get it mailed to them, fill it out, put it back and mail something back.
Well, unfortunately.
So that's just, you know, to me, mail them, QR code them, whatever, I'm okay with all of it, but I still don't want to not mail to everybody.
Understood, but I just wanted to ask a question for you both, because you're just have the solid baby here, I mean, find no problems.
Yeah, I can, you know, I can compromise at some point, but I really think I'm missing for that at this point, but Jack, Jack brought up some good points. Jim brought up some good points, it's got me thinking a little bit more about how we're going to address this and how I feel about how I'm going to vote on it.
This, this is why I want you guys, everyone here to understand. The committee that's worked on this, and the people that put the time and energy in this have been voted a lot of the time, volunteer time.
Yeah.
At such a high level of output, that I don't want you to think we're just all retarded saying, let's go and make this an expenditure.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think anyway, I said.
I don't, I don't think.
The steering committee was very clear, it wasn't like we had a, a, a couple people, I mean, it was overwhelming that, that the option to send a survey not follow up.
As we move through this, we, again, you, you mentioned it um as well, we want to reach the, we want to reach the community. And we want to reach the community with the best effort we possibly have, that's what this is all about. It's not about, truly, it's nothing more than, let's get every sponsor we can, so then we can roll this up and provide you with that. So you can make decisions on how we're going to vote for it. So that's really what, that's what we're trying.
Yeah, I believe you guys definitely want to get it right, so, you know, and that, as a, somebody that's lived out here since 1970. You know, I, I want you to get it right too, and I, I think you can get it right, so, I want everybody involved too, and I don't, you know.
Thank you for granting us time, we'll go back to Carden, we'll put something together, and we'll do our part to make sure you add up, so you can make your decisions.
Do we know when the next steering committee meeting is?
Uh, I'll send, I'll, our, our normal procedures, our consultant sends out a, a poll to see when we're able, able to meet. I don't necessarily think we need to do a meeting, I just think we need to start the conversation beginning. Therefore, that eliminates the time, eliminates access to the facility, we can answer the questions. We're dealing with a high, highly capable group of people that are very competent at the work. So as soon as we get that information, I'll reach out to our consultant, so we can move forward. And my goal is to have this, our portion wrapped up within the next week, or maybe two, before our next meeting, for sure.
Ideally, you'd want to have that, have that determination, whatever the steering committee's going to recommend, and that specific proposal from whoever the vendor is, uh, to us no later than next Friday. So that we can have that resolution in front of it.
Yep.
I don't think, that's what you were mentioning. So we'll back, we'll back to what we were hearing about that. Is there been enough discussion, I feel comfortable when I see it and say that's what I like. They've given enough discussions, you know.
The, in, in theory, this is exactly how we want to be, we want the discussion to come from us, the recommendations to come from you. And the discussion to have it here is so that we can all be forward, all be forward, so. No hard feelings, we appreciate it, so. All right, I will move that way now?
And, and I appreciate all the steering committee members showing up tonight.
Thank you.
Susan, do you have anything to add to your point?
Um, just that we are not only busy doing our regular business, but we're trying to get ready for this audit, so that we, you know, we'll all be working on Saturday. Giving out numbers, taking money and hoping everybody buys everything we've got. Um, the, the audit is not over, we're, and I think I mentioned this before, we are waiting on, they are waiting on the second half of this um stock report from one of our TPA's. And so once they've got that, then they will finish up, um, that they thought it was going to take at least 30 to 60 days, so. That's kind of, we're just in a holding pattern, they're not here anymore, they're not, we're not doing any, you know, pointing paperwork with them. It's just, they're waiting on that report, so. Um, normally it's earlier than this that we're finished, but that's what the holdup is right now.
Just to be really clear, because you said a word, but I don't think you meant to say, you're collecting, you're handing out, collecting money for the auction, not the audit.
Oh, I saw it, yes.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, actually, we're not collecting money for the audit, collecting money for the auction. When you buy something, you will have to pay more, yes.
I knew what you meant, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, I'm sorry, yes. You are right.
And Susan, you sent all of us, or Diane did, a link so that we can do virtually our um.
Bid?
Our sunshine. The sunshine law?
Oh, yes, yes.
And you said that, and we really need to reinforce that, that we all need to do it, but we can do it virtually now, which is wonderful.
Yeah, yeah, you can do it online, um, yeah. Legally, you have to do it one, at least once every term.
Right.
Um, so I always suggest that people get it over with right from the beginning and then get off their list until the next time. And then when you, you know, if you go for reelection, then that kind of should generate that idea that once that's over, you'll have to do it again. But yeah, now that it's online and you can just take it at your leisure, it's much easier, and then you get through it and the tests and you, and you get your certificate. And when you do get your certificate, we need to help.
Right.
Because auditors, you ask us for those.
Are you training the jet I went to in March, doesn't that, the same training?
Um, no, um, unless they have a specific class for, for the public records law, or the, the train laws. If they did, you should have gotten a specific certificate for that, from them. So look, and if you did, then.
Wait, I think they came here. Yeah, all right, well, that's Diane.
Yeah, no, she doesn't, I'm, not that I, I'm not aware that you, she hasn't one specific for that, but I'll look at whether, but you would have gotten a specific one just for that, I am, because like when I go to training, when I do ethics, then there's specific ones for each one, so.
And sometimes people would like to get those certificates and to sign up so that you get validation for them, and I think this may have happened in the past. And you just.
Let's, let's know, we, we thought we had it, we were.
Right.
Yeah.
If, if actually it did not, if this did not transpire the way they say it has to be, at least that's my understanding, then you don't get credit for that, even if you were there. Am I correct, Susan?
Right, and you, and also we can get signed on the audit, and that's it.
Do we have any old business? Nothing? Any new business?
Question, uh, will we be having a fall week promo this season?
We will.
Yay!
Um, we're sort of honoring the, I don't know, I'm seeing some leaves in the front yard right now, but we haven't selected the dates yet.
That'll be a bucket.
Yeah, we'll, but yes, we will.
Excellent.
Anybody in the public have any questions, any comments? Nothing? We have an executive session in hand for that, we do not? And David, I'm going to ask him to make a motion for adjournment. Our next meeting is going to be September 21st.
I'll make a motion for adjournment.
All seven? Kelly, would you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Cott?
No.
Mr. Hargit? Mr. Hargit? Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stott?
Yes. You've always wanted to do that, haven't you?